We had an executive session of the Urban Renewal Commission and an executive session in the Oregon City Commission prior to this meeting. Nothing was decided in those meetings that needs to come out and be voted on in a public session. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order for Wednesday, June 7, 2017. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Iid?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. Please join. Rise, join me in flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have two under ceremony proclamations and appointments. First is seventeen dash three oh two, mayoral appointments to city boards and commissions, and I am appointing John McGlaughlin to the Historic Review Board with the term ending December 31, 2019. And I want to thank John for stepping up to serve. He has been on the Historic Review Board before, actually chaired it for a long time, was not excited about coming back, but is willing to, is willing to serve his community, and for that, I thank him. Moving on, we also have a library summer reading program update from Dr. Cole. No, if it was John, I would have groaned.
I promise not to take twenty minutes.
You don't have that opportunity.
No.
So, good evening, Commissioner, and thank you for allowing me to come in front of you tonight for just a couple of minutes. We are very busy in the summer, every summer, with summer reading programs. We have kids programs as well as adult programs, and I'm really, really proud of my librarians who put this together, and so proud that we would like to tell you a little bit about it so that you can share this information with the world.
The National Summer Reading 2017 is Build a Better World. But the world is a big place, and we wanted to give kids in Oregon City a chance to do something great right in their own backyard. So, in December, we asked them to answer the question, what would make Oregon City an even better place to live? Our kids want lots of things we couldn't deliver: free puppies, more indoor skate parks, kind people everywhere, and for everything to be made out of pillows. But we also got lots of notes from kids who wanted to grow trees and grow flowers, and kids who wanted a world with more plants and more worms. And that, we can do, with a little help from all of you. Oregon City Police Department and Clackamas Fire District have each agreed to donate $250 to the library so we can plant a butterfly garden next to the Sixth Street entrance. But there's a catch: kids have to earn the money by reading this summer. When kids sign up for summer reading or turn in a completed reading log, they earn 25 cents towards the butterfly garden. All it takes is 25 minutes of reading a day on 25 separate days to earn that quarter. And to keep things interesting, we've added a competition element. Each time a kid earns their quarter toward the butterfly garden, they get a sticker to put on a life-size cardboard cutout for Chief Charlton. Whoever gets to $250 first earns bragging rights.
Hey, kids. I hope you have a great summer, and I hope you read a lot of books. Why? Because it makes you smart. I also hope you vote for the Oregon City Police Department. Why? Because cop cars are faster than fire trucks.
Clackamas Fire needs your help to build a butterfly garden this summer at the Oregon City Library. We need you to do three things: read for 25 minutes a day, read for 25 days, and help support Clackamas Fire and Sparky the Fire Dog.
Signups start at Oregon City Public Library on Thursday, June 1. For more information about summer reading, including a schedule of free events for all ages, visit our website at www.orcity.org/library.
Interesting.
So that's our promo that we put together with the help of Willamette Falls Media Center. We really want to thank them for all their work. They did a great job. And I also really want to thank Chief Band and Chief Charlton for being such great sports. We really appreciate it. And so tonight, what I have for you each is a summer reading tee-shirt because we had an Oregon City teen artist do this design, and we made a few tee-shirts with it, and a bag that all of our adult summer reading participants are getting. So you will be all set with all of the information you need for summer reading, and Jim, you're going to get your own.
You should be sneaking down there and putting up Jim Band stickers on stuff.
And I just guessed on these shirt sizes so you guys don't think they are changeable.
So I assume that the media center will also be running this on the channel as PSA?
I would assume as well. I haven't asked. We certainly already have it posted on Facebook.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we're at citizen comment. Do we have anybody tonight? Katie? So citizen comments are allowed up to three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. So who do we have? Esther Hunt. And apparently Claire Matt.
I'm not saying anything, I'm just giving her support.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Esther Hunt. I'm with the Oregon City Optimists Club. I live off of Redland Road in Oregon City. The Oregon City Optimists Club would like to take the opportunity to thank the city, the Parks Department, and especially John Waverly and his crew for all the hard work they did to help us put on our annual family festival down at Clackamas Park on May 19, 20, and 21st. And we're here because of the difficulty they had with all the rainy weather and the park being soggy and wet, and we just wanted to make sure that they got the appreciation that they deserve for all their hard work. And as an added bonus, I will be taking lunch to John and his crew tomorrow, compliments of the Optimists Club. And again, thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Good job. Way to go, Claire.
Okay, so is everybody okay with the agenda?
No.
This isn't the time.
Oh.
We'll do it at the beginning of the consent agenda. That's when we ask if, ask if anybody wants to pull something. So here we are at seventeen three thirty-seven, first reading of ordinance seventeen dash one zero zero seven, amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code for Accessory Building Structures and Uses, planning file IL-17 dash zero zero one. I assume this is Ms. Turway.
Yeah. So prior to doing the staff report, do you want to address issues related to the bias conflicts of interest, other things? We've got a land use proceeding. It is a legislative proceeding, so number one, bias isn't really an issue. You are supposed to be biased representing your interests. That's what you bring to it. As far as ex parte contacts, that's not, nothing you have to worry about either. Again, a legislative matter, you're allowed to have contacts with people. However, the conflict of interest provision still applies, and if this proposal would or could have a financial impact, either positive or negative, you could have a conflict of interest, you'd have, could have a potential one. However, because it affects a broad swath of people who do have accessory dwelling units...
Accessory dwelling units.
Same, accessory dwelling units. I meant membrane structures.
Membrane structures.
Thank you. There is a, there would be a class exemption for anybody who does have this type of structure. So I guess with that, I would ask if any of the commission members have a conflict they want to declare, and we can talk about the class issues.
Commissioner O'Donnell would have to make a declaration that I do own one of these and meet the parameters that you just described, and could suffer either positive or negative financial impact. However, I am a member of a quite broad class of people that own these, and as such, I'll state that.
So is this just the, the memory structure issue that's coming back?
This is, so thank you very much. This application, city staff is pleased to announce some proposed amendments to our Oregon City Municipal Code, and there's two, generally two main parts to these code amendments. One is to allow greater flexibility for accessory structures for residential properties, things like sheds and carports. And then the other component is to allow temporary structures on commercial properties as well. Trevor Martin is here from our Planning Division to tell you a little bit more about it.
Good evening, City Commission. My name is Trevor Martin, planner with the Oregon City Planning Division. Tonight, I have before you the proposed code and ordinance relaxing regulations on portions of the accessory buildings and structures within Oregon City. So I just did a quick summary there. Here are the items in the code that are being changed. The commission was approached about a year ago, revisit, about revisiting and relaxing regulations on accessory structures within the code. Staff worked with community stakeholders and commissions to review the proposed, proposed code. Much of the verbal feedback was positive with the changes, and staff believes that the proposed updates accomplished the city commission's goal while clarifying the overall process in establishing accessory buildings or structures. So as you see here, this would allow the metal-sided buildings. It would increase the height. It would remove some of the separation requirements, reduce some of the setbacks and corner lots, allow certain, certain structures constructed before a certain date to remain, relocate some, relocate some code, and then further defines, gets into some definitions, and then establishes temporary structures for commercial and industrial uses. So those are, those are the main goals that we're looking at, and we believe that the ordinance accomplishes those.
What's the time limit on temporary structures for in commercial?
Good question. So we, it's kind of broken down into a couple different areas here. So for structures up to 200 square feet, they can be permitted up to three, three consecutive days, and then no more than six times per year, so three and six. And then structures two to 800 square feet, they may be permitted two times per year and up to 30 consecutive days at a time, so if stores having a tent sale or something like that. And then structures larger than 800 square feet shall not be permitted for more than seven consecutive days. So, like a wedding or something like that.
Sure. Go ahead.
I have a question for Ms. Turway. I know that we received a Metro grant to look at options for affordable housing, including accessory dwelling units. I believe that work hasn't been finished yet, so I'm assuming this is just a preliminary pass at that, and that we may be looking at more language or more changes to make that more inviting for folks later.
Yeah, we'll do a complete code review to look at ways to remove and reduce barriers for housing. Right now, we have accessory dwelling units which are allowed. This code will provide a bit more flexibility. For example, right now, if you're on a corner lot, you have to be quite a ways away from your corner, and sometimes there's just not enough physical space to put an accessory building where you may want to have another dwelling unit for affordable housing or things like that. And so this code would reduce that setback and allow a taller building. So in some ways, it's sort of an initial first step, but when we do our equitable housing analysis, we'll go through all those code revisions, as well as things like SDCs and other barriers to process as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have one. How, how will this proposed new code, how will it open a door for some of the problems that the, the code as it's written today avoids?
So some of the things that this code will take into account, a lot of time, a lot of people are more interested in maybe a metal structure than construct, like a carport out of wood or something like that. It would allow for those, those metal carports to be constructed, and it would also establish... So we also get rid of some of the weird, like seasonal sale stuff, and then we establish more of like a guideline to follow for commercial businesses. So if they want to actually have a tent sale, they can do it, and there's actually a process to follow, so we don't have neighbors coming, why are they doing this? How are they doing this? We'll have a nice set of guidelines outlined for them. I think those are, those are the two big things that we get out of this.
And we get out of the whole...
Yes.
Memory structure mess that we got into a year and a half ago.
I understand. Yeah. One thing to note is, since we are introducing a new opportunity to allow temporary structures for commercial properties, and we regulate how often, how many, there will be a permit associated with that. So should this be approved at the second reading, we would come back with a resolution for a fee associated with that permit, but it would be nominal.
One more question. You mentioned an example of weddings. Can you just give some other examples of how that code might be used?
For example, fireworks stands, Christmas tree sales are really popular.
When we see for a month or so, those temporary-type structures come up, and they're typically not seeking approval from the city first. So this would help with that, to allow that avenue to be permitted. And we do see large structures that go up for, you know, like produce for sale outside grocery stores.
Brew festival, you know, there's a lot of different things that might go on.
Yeah. The other thing is that one section of this code does allow temporary structures in the right-of-way, which is helpful, and we have the, the right-of-way permits for, I don't know, a festival in the street or something. So it's just codifying things as well.
Motion?
Move to...
It is a public hearing.
Oh. Well, it certainly is. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do you have anybody wishing to testify? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now, is there a motion?
Move to approve seventeen dash three three seven, which is number seventeen dash one one zero seven, amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code.
First reading?
First reading.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg for discussion. Call or roll, please.
We need the, the reading.
Sorry.
Ordinance number seventeen dash one zero zero seven, an ordinance to the City of Oregon City adopting amendments to Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 6.07, hoved animals, Chapter 17.04, definitions, Chapter 17.54, supplemental zoning regulations and exceptions, and Chapter 17.62, site plan and design review.
Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Iid?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Now, does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Yes, I do. And item eight A.
Okay, let's, let's pull that, and we will consider that. Can I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus item eight A?
I'd like to talk about the Gilman Drive as well.
Which is where?
Eight D.
Troy and Park Drive.
Eight D.
Okay. Anything else? So can I have a motion to approve eight B, eight C, and, that's it? Yeah, eight B and eight C.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Iid, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Iid?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So we'll take eight A first. Personal services agreement with Friends of Willamette Falls Media Center. Ms. Riggs?
Yes, I'm right here.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In April of this year, we solicited quotes for our governmental and public access services, which includes running our programming on our government channels, along with having a public studio access for anyone in the public to come and use it for free, check out equipment and use that, also doing the videographing for all of our boards and commission meetings, and several meetings off-site as well, borrowing equipment from Willamette Falls Media Center to do some off-site videographing for free. And also that lovely video that you saw at the beginning of the meeting from the library was done through Willamette Falls Media Center for free. That's all part of our contract, and there, we had two other, we had one other quote this year, and that was from Swaget, which is the first time they have ever put in a proposal. And they are from Texas. They would require a huge upfront cost, which would have us purchasing all of their video camera equipment, and then if we decided not to go with them, I'm not sure if that equipment can be used by others, or how that would be integrated into other people's systems. And they could only do videoing in this room, so we couldn't have multiple meetings going on at the same time. They would not have a studio to offer to our public. They would have, they would not be taking care of our government channel. We would have to hire a person in-house to take care of that and manage that station. So it really didn't meet the full requirements necessary for this quote. So therefore, Willamette Falls Media Center is brought forward, and they're, I'm proposing that we sign another two-year contract with them, and is there any questions?
Ms. Riggs?
Yeah, I, I, I think that Willamette Falls offers a really amazing service to the community, everything that you just described, and they have been working with the City of Oregon City for so, for many, many years. We, the contract is for 150K about, for two years, I noticed, and, and I, I guess I'm just, you know, as, as someone who is elected to kind of watch out for some things, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're getting our money's worth, and, and I'm eager to hear from them a little bit, just on, on the return on our investment. There's other cities and, I don't know, organizations too that are donating to them, and I would like to have a present, have them come and give us a presentation on just what they have to offer, not just for our benefit, but for the public's too, so that, so that it can get out there more, that they, that all of you are welcome to come to Willamette Falls and take classes. I know my grandsons, my three grandsons went and had an amazing class over there recently, you know. So there's services that, that they offer that, you know, if we can help, help to, to get that out there. But I would like to, so I'd like to see a presentation on what exactly they are doing and how that's benefiting us, and I'd also like to see a copy of their budget.
Okay. So I had a discussion with Melody Ashford, the Executive Director, this afternoon. She is very interested in coming, giving a presentation to the city commission. She suggested the first meeting in October. Obviously, they need some time to put something like that together to, you know, do a video and do some other things that they'd like to do, but I would suggest that we have them come to see us at the first meeting in October. And the budget should not be a problem. I think all we need to do is, is ask them to send it over to Commissioner Iid. I'm aware of the budget. I'm sort of an ad hoc member. I don't, I don't regularly attend the, the board meetings, but I do show up occasionally as the former chair. So I don't think the money we spend on this is, it's certainly not wasted money, and more importantly, the money that we do pay is, is not very substantial portion of the total franchise fees that we receive from Comcast. And the PEG money that we get from Comcast not only supports WFMC, but also supports the things that we do here. So PEG money is, what is it?
Public education and government.
So it can only be used for those kinds of purposes, that it can only be used for capital expenditures. So for instance, the video equipment that we put into the new center at the library was paid for out of PEG funds. It wasn't general fund money. It's money that Comcast collects because of the federal laws surrounding cable to provide public access, and that's part of what that money does. So I think at, at $75,000 a year, it's a pretty decent bargain. Commissioner O'Donnell?
If Commissioner Iid's question is dollars paid for value received and protection of the public purse, I certainly understand that, because that's usually my position also. However, as one who's in business and seen the high cost, the unforeseen costs, and trying to make a transition from one provider to another, whether it be a software program or hardware, and additionally, Ms. Riggs stated the additional cost, that we'd have to provide additional service outside of the contract, which is currently being provided. I'm very comfortable with the numbers as quoted, but I'll abide by whatever decision the commission makes. Very comfortable with the services provided and the value received.
Other comments, questions?
I'd be comfortable approving the budget now and having a presentation of their services in October.
You mean approving the contract now?
Approving the contract.
Is that a motion?
I would do.
So can we do that in the form of a motion in a second?
I would move to approve the personal services agreement with the Friends of Willamette Falls Media Center for a community media center for production and channel management.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Iid, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg for the discussion. Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Iid?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Mayor, if I could just ask one clarifying question. Would you like that in a work session type setting, or just a presentation at a city commission meeting?
No, I think, I think she can do it, and she said, you know, 10, 15 minutes, so let's just put it under presentations, and if we have questions, we can ask her questions then.
Works for you, Commissioner Iid?
I'd rather have it in the regular session, because it, more people tend to watch than the work sessions. So moving on to seventeen dash three thirty-eight, amendment two of personal services agreement, PS seventeen dash zero zero one, with Geotechnical Resources Inc. to provide geotechnical services for mitigation recommendations and monitoring related to the Trillium Park Drive landslide. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. I just, I'll go through this real quickly. I don't know if you have a specific question, or if you just wanted a broad overview of why we were doing the amendments.
Let's start with the, if you had a specific question.
It looked like you were going to be doing monitoring for six to nine months, and then, so I guess my question is, would the road remain closed for the duration of the monitoring, and then a decision made about whether to open or keep the road closed, or if this monitoring would be an ongoing effort?
So we do expect the monitoring to be an ongoing effort. We also expect for at least the next nine-month period for the road to be closed. So we've seen enough change there. The question is, is do we open the road up to vehicle traffic or pedestrian traffic, or not at all? If we open it up, how do we open it up? And some of the analysis is going to help inform if we were to, by, by opening it up, I mean, opening it up more to a natural state than what it, what it is now. There's a, there's kind of a fill there in the, in the valley when they built that roadway. And the question is, is should we mitigate that roadway fill by cutting that canyon back, back the way, or close to what it was originally?
So you're saying, take the road out?
Take the road out. So we are contemplating those things. I'm not suggesting that that's the answer. That's part of the reason why we're doing extra. That combined with, we've got so many residential structures in that area, and they're all in kind of the same landslide zone. If you looked at some of the graphics there, they kind of show that. So we, we've, we decided after hearing at length from the Geotech, kind of some of the history and some of his thoughts on that landslide, the fact that it's not a shallow landslide, it's a deeper set slide, we want to, we, we decided, since they hadn't done the drill work yet, to go ahead and add an additional monitoring location. And then we have to figure out if we're gonna, we're getting enough of these around town that maybe we should get our own monitoring equipment. They'd still have to install the casing, but we're going to kind of figure that out over the next few months.
Is the intent of this contract just to monitor the impacts on the road, or for the larger area? For instance, let's say it finds that there's definite movement, would that jeopardize some of the nearby houses in the neighborhood?
So we want to look beyond just the roadway. We want to look at, we've, we've got a monitor location that, that's down into the lower neighborhood, that's closer to Highway 213. Wake, I had it up here on the screen here, I'm trying to remember the name of the street. Wake Robin Circle, I want to say. Wake Robin Circle, I want to say. Yeah, Wake Robin Circle. We've got one location there, which is actually, you know, several hundred feet from the Trillium Drive slide location. But it's also on kind of the peninsula of what is a slide-prone area, so we want to, we want to start tracking that history. We've got a lot of geologic history here because we started some monitoring prior to 2006. And actually, the original developers still had some monitoring wells in that area way back in early 2000s. So we've got some history there, but again, I felt like, given our experience with landslides, more information is better, especially since we've got structures there. So that's why we're asking for at least one more monitoring well. And it's, yeah, it's a long, kind of a long-term view of that area.
Great. Thank you.
So on the same topic, and this goes to Mr. Turway, if you thought you were going to get out of this. Do we have now, because obviously in the past, we have not had the right codes and other things in place. You know, we're still taking some political heat for the Forest Edge Apartments, even though that was a commission, you know, 25 years ago who made that decision. Do we have codes and stuff in place to prevent a situation like this from being built again in Oregon City? This was to Mr. Turway, I'll start to you, Mr. Lewis.
We have much better codes now than we used to, and we also have much better technology to help inform us better than we used to. Some of our overlay districts, we have a geologic hazards overlay district, which is a district that includes properties that are sloped 25% or more, and then buffers 50 feet from that. And then we did a bunch of LiDAR and technical data to find historic landslides. And we put a 200-foot buffer from all of those as well. And so we have that information now that we didn't have back, say, when this development occurred, so we would have known more. But we, we think it's very good. It does involve a lot of technical studies, and it'd be hard to say that anything is perfect. But we think that's really good. We heard that it's one of the best in the metro region for what it's worth, but.
So last question, Mr. Lewis. That street, Trillium Park Drive, that, that sort of cuts that neighborhood in half, right?
Yes, sir.
So now there's only, on the north side, behind the hospital, there's only one ingress and egress street. And there's what, two maybe on the others, on the south side?
Gilliam Drive is the, and, and then on the other side is Davis.
Right.
So, yeah, each neighborhood, so we're, we're definitely limiting, we're, we would be limiting the amount of throughway for those folks, so they would.
And is there any concern from, especially the fire department?
We've talked to the fire department. They understand that it's, right now it's short-term. We haven't talked to them about a long-term plan. And I'm not, I don't want to leave you with the impression that we're certain about long-term closure. I just, we've been in there with repair work that was fairly expensive just a couple of years ago. I don't want to do that again until we've got some real certainty about the stability of that area, long-term. And, you know, the, the Geotech has suggested there's some other ways we could go in and do some drainage things. It'd be very expensive as well, and I really don't want to jump into that without the geotechnical analysis to go along with it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I saw Frank was up here first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm not looking at the screen. Commissioner O'Donnell.
A simple statement that having read the, the report and looking at the nature and number of the devices, and that they provide remote monitoring, and that they're going to draw a correlation between any movement and rainfall. I think that's, that's valuable knowledge. I think it also could be transferable knowledge, especially in the realm of seismic activity and soil conditions as related to rainfall. And knowing all that, I'm, I'm comfortable with the proposal.
Commissioner Shaw?
Mr. Lewis, what's the status of that structure that was affected at the original landslide there? Did they have to move out? Has there been any other movement there? Can we, do you see anything?
As, as far as I know, there, well, have we been back in the house? I don't know if building, if our building official's been back. It's still deemed a dangerous building, but, and they're still vacant. But I don't know of any new evaluations.
Yeah, the, the property owner would have to hire some geotechnical people to do a report to say that the, the land isn't moving, and hire a structural engineer to say that the house is sound. And that's not been submitted to the city at this point, so.
Are they aware of that?
Are, is the property owner aware that they need to do the studies? Yes, they are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve 17-338, Amendment Number Two of Personal Services Agreement with Geotechnical Resources, Inc. to provide geotechnical services for mitigation recommendations and monitoring related to Trillium Park Drive landslide.
That's a mouthful. Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeberg, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner I?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Mr. Manager, Communications.
Thank you. We'll start tonight. Presentation by Mr. John Lewis concerning the 9090 lane closures that we'll be seeing here. I've just got about five slides. I wanted to explain the details of this because on the 12th, we're planning to set up the traffic control that would close 9090.
Is there music with this, like the library provided?
No music, but I'm, I'm.
Please proceed, I'm sorry.
But the staff report is excellent. Yeah, this is going to be a big inconvenience and impact to Oregon City, and we've got the word out on that. I want to get it out again tonight. Monday, the 12th, this project is going to get underway. So go through it real quickly on a day-by-day basis, because it's basically 12 days of, of closure. And that's assuming everything goes as planned. It's a very tight schedule. And the state really wanted the, this, this lane limitation limited to the number, that number of days. So obviously, on, on the first day, they'll be installing the traffic control and what we're calling rockfall protection. So one of the reasons why they wanted both lanes closed is because we're messing around with a vertical face cliff and potential for rockfall. So if it falls, they wanted to get traffic as far away from that as they could. So that happens on Monday. They're going to shut down the, well, we've already shut down the, the water line, but they're going to remove the 10-inch water line. They're going to cut it out of there on Tuesday, the 13th. We're going to do a video inspection of the water line under the roadway. Now, if we find problems there, we're probably not going to deal with them. Under this scenario, we'll have to define them and figure out, you know, next steps for that. But we'll be looking at that on Tuesday. The next day, they will be removing the mesh, that, that mesh that you see that kind of is rockfall protection, and starting to what they call scale the rocks. So there'll be a rock climber that'll be working up and down the bluff there to kind of knock any loose rock free and check to see if any of the larger boulders are, are in, of concern. So that'll be an evaluation. The next day, they'll be installing new pipe support anchors. And that's really going to be, the way they do that is they drill the rock, any rocks. So the pipe has to be anchored, so that's one set of anchor bolts. If they find rocks that need to be bolted back to the mountain, they drill through that rock and bolt it into more secure basalt. And they set those in cementitious slurry, so they have to cure. So the, the one thing that we just wanted to point out to everybody was, there won't be activity on that over the weekend, right? So yes, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a busy job, and there's a lot of work going on there. But during the weekend, they won't necessarily be working on that. They're beginning, waiting for those anchor bolts to cure. And then the following week, they'll be bolting things back together and finishing up the job. But that was important for, we wanted to make sure you knew that. The, the lane closures accommodates both Memorial Day and Fourth of July holiday weekends, so we were thinking of that ahead of time. Impact to the promenade, we were hoping will be minimal, because they're planning to do most of that work from the lower side of the, of the project. We have done 28 notices, 28-day notices of lane closures. So oversized vehicles will be able to use a different corridor and not be channeled through this way. And then right now, we've got vehicle message signage. I think there's four of them out there that kind of warn folks.
When you say oversized vehicles, you mean actual oversized vehicles. You're not talking about your standard 40-foot semi-truck?
We're notified, the, the trucking industry's been notified. So, you know, the, the, there will be narrow lanes. They'll still be able to get through those lanes. At the bottom end, where it makes the curve, there are actually going to be 16-foot lanes, so they're going to widen those out.
Right.
So, but, you know, we'd, we'd still rather not have, just, just because of the traffic volumes. We'd rather not have those big trucks in there. So the traffic control will start up near the top of the hill at South Second, near the viewpoint, and go all the way through, past Railroad Avenue, past Main Street, and end pretty much near Sixth and where the Oregon City Westland Bridge crosses 9090. So it's a, it's a long detour route, and it's not really a detour route, but, but lane closure. We won't allow vehicles to make the, I guess it would be, southbound vehicles to make the left turn off of 9090 onto Main Street or Railroad. So just want to avoid those conflict points. And then, just to let you know, there's been just a, I would say, a significant amount of public outreach. The City can be, I think, got noticed on this, and we've been, you know, looking at social media. And again, the, using ODOT, press, we issued a press release today, as did ODOT. So we're hoping to get the word out, and people will avoid that. We're also under the understanding, I haven't, I sent a text, and I was curious, maybe one of you know better than I did. I haven't gotten out of the office today. But their intent was to open South End Hill tomorrow morning, but it may, so I don't know if anybody noticed that. But the idea would be not to have both projects going at the same time.
So has the county done whatever repairs they're going to do on South End?
The county has done their temporary repairs. The message I got back from our street, when asked whether or not they'd open it, he said, "Maybe. I know they striped it at 4:00 PM. Didn't see any signs at 5:00. It was open, though." So striping's down. They committed to tomorrow morning, so that's probably.
So if it was ready, would they have picked up our stuff, or would our guys have to come out and do that?
We would have to come out and do that. It's, we're, we're taking care of the detour route stuff, and they're taking care of all the closure stuff.
Okay. So go back to that for just a second. So here is another reason why I say we have to have a PR person. Because there's a couple places here that I don't see where we could be reaching a lot of people that we're not. Oregon City Chit Chat on Facebook has a, a pretty big group. And then there's also Nextdoor. And Nextdoor reaches thousands of people in, in the Oregon City area. So we need to work on, you know, getting out to those other social media platforms.
Agreed.
Moving on.
We'll issue, we'll do that.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I'm done.
Questions are good to go?
Okay. Just two quick updates. June 22nd, 6:30 at the Evernethy Center, Downtown Oregon City Association, Chamber of Commerce, Best of Oregon City 2017 Awards Ceremony. That, that'll be happening that night, $20. BestofOregonCity.org, you can buy your tickets there. If anybody has any questions about that, let us know.
So on that, I'm going to be at the US Conference of Mayors. So if Commissioner Shaw or someone else would take my place, talk to Jonathan. He's, and, and all of you, I'm sure, could participate in, in part of the awards if you wish to. So just get ahold of Jonathan. I already told him I'm not going to be here, so. Go ahead.
And then my last update, just to give you a heads up, Netflix is starting to shoot a series in here. They're renting some space at the Oregon City High School Jackson Campus. They'll be beginning June 20th, 2017, and run until about the end of September with shooting on that location as well as, as well as various locations throughout Oregon City and Clackamas County. If the series does well, I could potentially come back for, for multiple more years. So you'll see some of that activity going on in the near future here. So that concludes my updates for tonight.
Awesome. Commissioner Mengeberg?
I attended the city's dinner along with Mr. Lewis. I, Lake Oswego a couple weeks ago, got a great tour of their new water treatment facility and their mixed-use development with ground floor retail and very high-end condos up above. Very impressive project. Also, as with all of my other fellow commissioners, I attended the Willamette Falls Legacy Project grand opening on Saturday, which was a great success and very well-attended.
Mr. Wright?
Just wanted to add a little bit to the city manager's information on the Best of Oregon City. That the event is, is, it's like, it's like an Oscars-style event. The ceremony is, is going to be very exciting, and they will be announcing the winners of the Best of Oregon City, where over 3,000 ballots were submitted in order to choose the, the, the best of cer, certain categories of businesses in the city. So I, I just, if you can come, it would be a really fun time. And the highlight is that they're going to distribute the, the, like 50-page magazine with all of these businesses that have won first, second, and I think third, or I don't, something like that. And then they're going to mail that doc, that whole magazine out to 15,000 people in the city. So it's great advertising for all those businesses, as well as gives Oregon City a chance to, folks to, to know about all the various businesses in town. So you're all invited. I attended the Memorial Day event at the Mountain View Cemetery. Again, there was a flyover while the band was playing, very meaningful moment there. Enjoyed the, the ceremony immensely. Again, I, too, attended the Riverwalk Design Rollout, and I thank staff and all of the partners for putting on a top-notch event. It was excellent. And then again, if you're at the Rose Parade this weekend, watch for the, the Heritage Days float, where there's going to be a reenactment of the coin toss. Tom, Tom Batty and Rocky Smith are going to be doing that. And behind them is going to be a historical bus containing several people dressed in period clothing. So if you're down there in the rain, be sure to wave at us when, when we go by. So, well, you know, rain on the parade.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
All right. So I've narrowed it down to three things here tonight, so. So, yeah, music, please. No, I attended the, the ceremony that celebrated the environmental, environmental learning centers celebration for opening the headwaters of the Newell Creek project there that they're going to do, redevelop that whole project there. So, and the Grand Ron Indians were there and everything. It was quite a, quite a thing. So, so that's underway. The other thing I did go to, is with everybody here, I think, attended the Willamette Falls, the Riverwalk Project at Omsi. And I, it was very professionally done and everything. And I thought maybe the celebration was over until I went outside onto the patio. And Ms. Terri, she got to hear this Monday night. But as I was sitting around one of the tables outside.
Yes, oh my god.
I was outside conversing with some folks, and we're right next to the fence, which is next to the pathway. And here came the naked bike riders. So that was interesting.
They were training for the opening.
It was a training event, yes. Yes, so that was, it was training.
So how far did you chase them?
It's a picture you can't unsee.
Yeah, I know. It was, it was not what you thought, Chris. Trust me, it wasn't, it wasn't there. So it's not like the picture. Anyway. Lastly, lastly, is the Daily Journal of Commerce Awards Ceremony. And I've, I got to go and sit in for Director Cole. And the, there was 90 projects submitted to the Daily, Daily Journal of Commerce Awards Ceremony. And that, they range from anywhere from multifamily projects to residential projects, landscape projects, to public projects, which we are in. And the two projects in Oregon City were submitted. The Oregon School District Transportation. the two projects in Oregon City were submitted. The Oregon School District Transportation Maintenance Facility, which is the bus barn, was submitted. It got, it came as a finalist for Oregon City. And, but, and I think I've talked about this before. So, the Oregon City Public Library came in second place, and they are in our magazine here. So, it's pretty cool. And we, I think we have an award coming. Mo has ordered our plaque and everything, so we get to see that. We got second place. First place was O H S U, you know, and then third place in that division was the Oregon Zoo. So, you get second place in that little category, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
You know, and there's probably a dozen projects here that were under the public heading and stuff. And so, good job for Library Cole, P and C Construction, and Scott Edwards Architecture. That's what I got. Thanks.
Okay. So, I attended the Memorial Day celebration at the cemetery. I did a couple of other W F L P, the Legacy Project events, other than just the Saturday event. We on, I think it was Tuesday, no, it was Wednesday, we did, in the morning, we did media tours for the media. Channel Two was fashionably late, so they were just coming out by the time we were done. So, I led Channel Two on a personal tour of the site while everybody else was doing the other thing. So, we spent about four hours on site with all of the local television stations, Pamplin Media, Oregonian, Daily Journal of Commerce, and a couple, one national online news outlet, I forget the name of it. But it was an interesting time, got to share a lot of the information. And then, in the afternoon, we had what we called the 4H Tour. So, it was the hard hat tour of what folks we would think or would hope would be major donors to the, to the, to the private fundraising side that's going on under the auspices of Rediscover the Falls. What else? Of course, I went to the thing on Saturday, and have been talking to some folks about things that are going on in the city, and how we might make some more economic development happen. And as soon as I can talk about those in more detail, I will. This month, I'm going to be gone quite a bit. I'll be gone to the American Water Association Conference, starting Saturday morning, and we'll be back until Thursday. And then, the following week, I'll be leaving on Friday to the US Conference of Mayors in Miami Beach, and be back on the 27th Tuesday. So, I think there's a work session in there on the, is it the 13th?
Yes.
So, I may try to call in, depending on how late the work session is and where that particular topic is. So, if you need me, I might be able to be available. Beyond that, that's it for me. We're not, no, oh, sorry. We're out of it, Frank didn't have anything.
I did, yeah.
Anything else for the good of your order? Then we're adjourned.